Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, do you want to get us in a prayer?
Everyone, please, Father, hit. Dear Good Lord, Father, we thank and praise you for the beautiful weather that you've given us as of late, moisture, and pray that you would continue to provide us with the moisture for the growth of plants and harvesting around us. Dear Lord, I pray that you watch over the activities this evening, that they be pleasing to you, and that we can accomplish the works of this city. In your name we pray.
Okay, next, we have the approval and reading of the minutes of the June 7th meeting. And would you have confirmation?
Motion for both the reading and approval of the minutes presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda, we have the engineer's report.
This should be fast. Sent the engineer's report on Friday. Generally, there's not much going on this summer. We're getting through finalizing the contracts. I think we have the final of the three construction contracts, I think I'm Monty's desk right now. So Jerry will sign those. The contractors have to provide a schedule along with their contracts. This is the tank contractor, and he's showing, starting the last week in April next year, and finishing up by the end of August. So just what we expected, and it sounds like Tan's contract will coincide with that. Electrician will probably be at both the same time. There's a chance that Tan will come in and do some of the dismantling work at the treatment plant this winter. He thought that would be good winter work to do. But I have not received their schedule yet. They have to ask us if that's okay. And, you know, we'll run it by you guys, you know, have a pre-destruction meeting before they start. We submitted the supplementary caution request to the State Water Commission. That'll be on the agenda in August. Nothing is gonna happen until then, so you might not see us much in July. I mean, unless something else comes up. That's kind of our own main thing going on. I mentioned that the last time I was here, I would check into the expedition states stuff. Like Monty gave you a little update, maybe the last time I wasn't here. Just continuing to provide support there. Otherwise, the only real thing, you know, I have is just some miscellaneous asphalt patching. Where we did the water service line insulating this spring, I think there's five patches over there. I was told that CSI is doing the paving at the airport this summer. And with your guys' permission, I was gonna get a quote from them to do the patching. Granted, I just measured it up before we got here, so I was just gonna send them an email. Other than that, there's a couple of bridge abutments that have settled about that much that they just brought up to us. A little bit of minor milling and paving. The tonnage on asphalt almost to nothing. Usually on those things, it's a bigger deal to get somebody here than it is to actually do them. So with your permission, I'll reach out and get those quotes. I don't think everybody's okay with that. Otherwise, small little edge sliver broke off by the dog park. Those are the only real things that I know of. Is there anything else anybody knows of that, as long as I'm doing it, you know, to give... The alley behind WRT is something to use... That's a little bigger animal. I can definitely get a quote on it, but I'm suspecting that might be something where people might get billed for it. So I'd hate to go through and work there if there wasn't a desire to do that yet. But the other little stuff, I consider little maintenance things. So it's up to you guys, if you want us to do just the little stuff, or the little stuff and the alley thing.
I guess, in my opinion, it doesn't hurt to get a quote for it, just have my mind set out there, and then we can make a decision if it makes sense to move forward on that larger scale. I mean, they may come back and say, well, we only plan to be around for the airport for this short amount of time. I know we just had another player that did 1806, and I missed them. They came in and out at the plant, you know, real quick, and took their facility down, and off they went to the next project.
I just called them today, and he said, "I wish you'd have called last week," but I missed that. Yeah, you're right. They might say no. They might say they don't have time, but I guess we'll... Those patches on that street over there hold up pretty good. I mean, they're packed in good with reclaimed asphalt, so I think they'll be fine for a while. Otherwise, the other stuff's just ticky tack little things. That's really all I had. Does anybody have anything for me that's come up? Oh? Okay, well, I'll sit in the crowd for a while. Other than that, we'll be around occasionally, and I guess if I can get a quote from them, I'll come back to, you know, the next meeting, or send it up so you guys can take a look at it. Thanks, guys.
Next, we have street closure on July 7th. What is that?
I think it was discussed at the Pioneer Apartments meeting, board meeting the other night, that on July 7th, there's music in the park. They had asked the car club to bring their cars down and park them along Main Street so that people going to music in the park can also take a look at the cars. Plus, the Hayes and Pioneer Apartments Board will be buying vouchers for meals for the residents of the apartments. So kind of thinking it would be nice to block off that street so people can go back and forth and look at the cars without that majority voucher. I guess we're just seeking your approval to barricade that off, basically, from the corner here by the library down to the stop sign.
And it would just be for the hours that they have the music going and stuff?
Yeah.
I think they talked about four to eight.
Four to eight, something like that.
Kind of a window of four to eight.
Make motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, fireworks ordinance revision.
As I stated in the notes sent to you, I came up with several different variations of how you want to do the order, or how you can do this ordinance. The discussion was to try to copy Beulah ordinance, and they basically prescribe dates and hours for specific years. And I did prepare an ordinance that goes through 2035 for that, which would then have to be readressed in 2036. One of the other options was to just designate if the fourth falls on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, whichever day of the week, the dates would be specified for that day of the week, which wouldn't require it to be revisited after a few years. And the simplest one is to just declare discharge of fireworks from specifically July 1st through the 4th, July 1st through the 5th, however you wanted to do it.
Okay.
And this would serve as your first reading of the ordinance, any changes could be made, or whichever one you wanted to proceed with, and go then to the next meeting. Obviously, this isn't gonna happen before the 4th of July, so...
So just echo what Monty said there. The second choice, or the scenario that he put up there is perpetual. It just basically spells it out, which, not that it's terribly complicated, but you have to interpret and look at your calendar and kind of figure out how that all fits in. Whereas the one that mirrors Beulah and goes through 2035 here specifically has the dates for each of the individual years. Guess my opinion is, even though it has to be revisited after 2035, that's quite a ways out. It's not like we're introducing a tremendous amount of additional work, because it almost then starts to repeat itself. You just change the years out there, and that in and of itself is somewhat separate. I guess my recommendation would be that we continue down the path of emulating exactly what Beulah is doing, and it keeps things simple and the same between the two communities, so there's not a lot of confusion.
So you're making that in the... We have a motion, or is there a discussion?
I'm just trying to create some conversation here.
I mean, I agree. I'd like to see it on the 1st and the 4th, regardless of the date. But there has been a lot of discussion on the way that Beulah has it set up, keeping a weekend in there. I'm of either way.
And to go along with my opinion there, and I'm throwing in a weekend, it probably enhances the amount of sales and stuff as well, I would think, which is good for local commerce.
You know, so I guess, I guess I've been on the board now for, I guess, nine years, you know. I've only heard of two, two, I guess, people, I guess, that don't want, I guess, fireworks. And I would say that there's a lot more that do, like, long over the, I guess, like, nine days. Even if you were to look in the night sky, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of fireworks going on, you know.
And I personally, I've had a lot of calls requesting that we... Excited that we've been talking about just the four or five days. A lot more calls, I'm banning altogether this year, but a lot on limiting the days. Will it affect the sales? I don't know.
Well, and then too, I mean, I guess, you know, I guess, like last meeting, I guess we were kind of, kind of, I guess, kind of, I guess, like, split. Split, you know, on a, on, I guess, a purchase on the pressure washer, you know. And so now, so now, I mean, as we're gonna only say, I guess, we can only do them, you know, for, I mean, like, three days or four days, you know. And then, and then, I mean, the sales tax money is gonna be down.
You're not selling them for four days, you're selling them for, you can sell them for the nine days.
Yeah, but I mean...
Well, you don't know if it's gonna be down. I mean, we can't say for sure that it's gonna be down. We can't say it's gonna go up. It's not gonna say it's gonna stay up if there's nine days.
It's gonna go down.
A lot of people buy them for December 31st. You can't buy them then, so, you know, I don't, I can't say, I can't predict that if we should have put it down for four days, it's gonna make sales go down. Just why just shoot off more on the four days that they can? I don't know.
Well, and then too, you know, I guess, I guess, like, part of the reason why, too, I guess, why to do, like, nine days, is, I mean, I mean, as we know, you know, the... It seems like the wind is always blowing and stuff, and the weather's not always good for, for, I mean, like, three days in a row, or four days in a row, so...
They don't have an answer? I... What are the wishes of the board? Or if we don't?
I think your other option would be to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting when the whole board is here.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna suggest, is wait until we have more people there. Because we're not gonna get done before the 4th anyhow. Something we can discuss even more than the next meeting. I mean, it's, we've got time till next year.
And we can independently solicit comment from our constituency out there.
Yeah, ask people what they think.
See what feelings are.
Yeah. The other thing I want to bring up at this time was, there is talk that the county is banning fireworks in the county. It's something I've been approached about in the city. I don't know what everyone's thoughts are, if there's any thoughts from people in the audience, or what's something we need to consider with our shortage of rain. I do have an email from our fire chief, and that he is not opposed to allowing fireworks in the city. He is signing up on a ban in the county. If that makes a difference, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I would just say that, you know, in town, I guess we don't have, I guess, tall, tall, I mean, you know, I guess, tall, I guess, prairie grass, and I mean, you know, and then too, I mean, there's a lot of... There's a lot more people, I guess, watching over things here in town versus out, you know, outside of town, I mean, so... So I guess I don't think it'd be a problem in town.
I have a question.
Yes.
If the fire, if there's a fire ban, say that goes back, I can't remember if it's class one or two, but where they have, you know, you can't use charcoal grills, and you can't have campfires. What does that do to the fireworks? Does that ban fireworks, or can you still shoot fireworks?
I don't think that ban mentions fireworks.
They're back to a stage one. If it doesn't mention fireworks, everything's based on the fire danger index. So depending on what's going on that day, it's still regulated unless the county has imposed their ban.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on that?
I'm in agreement with Casey. I think our fire chief has spoken that they seem to be comfortable in the city because of those reasons that were mentioned by Casey. And a lot of people water their grass, and, you know, you've got a little bit more, a little bit more moisture and stuff in town, and you've got a more watchful eye over it, so...
Okay, so we are...
I guess I would defer, Pat, that they need, should take action affirmative or against, or if when they take no action, there's no ban.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And that's the wishes of the board? Okay? What's that?
Why is it all a B?
B?
B.
B.
Okay. Condemnation of 102 Fourth Street Northeast.
This is the home that the owner let go back now, or is in the process of letting go back, gave us a letter that we, after we had condemned it. We did get a bid from Sletton Excavating. They would, there is need to repair a curb stop at the same location, so he gave us a bid of $3,3260 to remove the house and garage. Our crew would backfill with...
$3,000, not 30.
$3,260. So...
And how soon, if approved, can they...
He didn't have a firm date. He said things are kind of in between right now with some of his other projects, so...
So that would be potentially soon. Okay. I just know it's already getting on a hand with the weeds and everything like that, and, yeah, the summer's slipping away. I'd make a motion to accept the bid from this outfit for $3,260.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried.
I will contact all week tomorrow.
Perfect.
I can move, keep moving on, right?
You can keep moving on.
Fireworks sales permit generous Jerry's fireworks.
So me and my family, we were planning on selling fireworks again this year because last year we sold, and we are hoping for rain. But if we do sell, it's gonna be at the same location.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, at least we didn't ban them in town for that, so...
I'd make a motion to accept or provide the okay for fireworks sales permit for generous Jerry's fireworks.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call.
Hillary.
Aye.
Stern. Wolf.
Aye. Motion carried. Can we just take a little break here until...
If you want, or if you want to go on to the report, it's up to you.
Oh, well, we can go on to reports. Water.
Water and sewer, okay, nothing to report at this time. Dave, I don't know if you have anything?
No, I believe Ryan contacted the case or whatever. Maybe somebody introduced some camera work.
Okay, good.
Casey?
I don't really know, so...
I have, believe, Spider and Forestry. The only guy I have is Jim has reported that he has ordered the decals for his car for the police department. They are using green this year and black. They just had to get away from the blue, and they should be on soon, so he will no longer be on mark.
I have been approached on that. If we had an undercover...
He said he's gotten comments on that, too, so...
I said, "Don't break the law. You don't have to worry about it."
Okay, we have HCD.
Okay, I'll just stay here. You know, we were very hopeful that we were going to be 100% filled at Pioneer, but we have a couple of folks that are moving out, that have been there, and now they're gonna move out. One is moving back to Herb Lake, going back to the home area. And another individual that was here is actually purchasing a home in Arizona. So we're gonna be down to, we're gonna be down to that 16 number again, but hopefully we'll get that, that number back up in terms of where things are at. Monty, are we gonna, is there some, is there someplace on the agenda we're gonna talk about the tree? Okay, so let me just do it as part of my report. How does that sound?
Yeah.
I'll do it as, there's a dead tree, a pretty, you know, it's a fair-sized tree on the front lawn of Pioneer, okay? And it really should come down. And so, of course, you know, it's not like we're real flush with cash, and so we were wondering, you know, if we could get some assistance from the city crew, you know, and the lift, you know, the arm truck and whatever. Even if they, even if, you know, if we had to give some compensation, you know, maybe keep tabs on the hours or whatever, to have that thing down versus going commercial with it. I know that previously, you know, when that lot was turned over, the city removed a lot of trees as part of just a, you know, kind of gratis, gratification, you know, previously, so I'm not sure. I didn't have a chance to visit with Mike about it, per se. Today, I'm not sure what it would take to do that, you know, but, and it could be one of those projects that, you know, I don't even know if I want to say this, but if they could fit it in someplace, you know. I'm not sure how busy they are or whatever, but, and they get after that stuff pretty good once they get after it. And then the other part of it, of course, the good part about it is, is they've got the equipment that can handle some of those big tree trumps, you know, and those kinds of things, so... But it would be, it would be nice to really get that out of there, because it is, it's kind of an eyesore now. You know, right now, the branches haven't busted in any, but it's, when you drive by, it's bone dry. In fact, he had marked it black, Jerry, as gigged, so it really should get removed.
It's just off the boulevard.
Just off the boulevard, okay. So...
If you might technically visit with David, Mike can see what kind of hours they think it would take, or whatever, whatever you guys want to do.
I think we should do that, because it may kind of come up with a, an estimate of if we want to charge them, or, yeah. Why don't we do that and bring it to the next meeting?
Sounds good. So a couple of other things is, is that you've probably heard or seen in the news that James, over at J.F. Herr, is going to be vacating his location in the coffee shop. And he's anticipating that July 1, he'll be opening the new place, so that's, that'll be good. I talked to him here the other day, and they had some issues with the flooring, but they got that all squared away now, and so I think they're gonna be ready to go by, by July 1. And it was really pretty quiet for quite a while, and we've had it advertised since February that that facility would be available, or open it, so I was able, I did show it a couple different times, so hopefully, maybe somebody will be interested in taking, taking it over and going there. And then I did send, if you had a chance to get your email this morning, I did send out the notice about next door here at DeAndreas. I forget what even the name is, the poorhouse?
Yeah, poor, poor me.
Poor me, that they are open for some new service now. And I noticed that there's still a lot of work, I think, at least is being done behind the scenes. I'm gonna probably walk over there tomorrow and visit with them just to see. So I'm, so I can give a better report to my board. How does that sound? But, so that's good. That's, that's, that's always nice to see that those things happen, so... That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
I don't remember offhand, but I know Doreen had asked, and I had asked her, and she had asked, I think they've got a grand opening that they're thinking, they're doing the kind of soft opening now, but have an actual grand opening, I believe it was July 10th, was the big, somewhere right around.
Or in the law school reunion?
Right, it was gonna be right, associated with that, yeah.
Anything else, Buster?
Nope, that's all.
Okay. Can I start the public? We're gonna recess the regular meeting, and we're gonna open up the public hearing, and this is on liquor license for bees can pay.
So, yeah, I talked to Monty about basically taking over the one that DeAndreas have. What I'd like to do is just have a very small selection of just beer to have in the evening. Thinking that, you know, families might go out among them, maybe we'll have one or two drinks. And bring your kids with, currently the tolerance to do that. So that's kind of what I was looking to do. My original plan was hopefully have it going by July 1, but it's not, that's not gonna happen, so last time I talked to Monty, we pushed it to August first. Just, I just, I needed much more equipment for it before I can even consider doing anything expanding. And I'm waiting on some of that. And even, I even talked to a guy in mine, I'd look at it two months minimum to get coolers and freezers put in. And I'm waiting on some of that. And even, I even talked to a guy in mind, I'd look at it two months minimum to get coolers and freezers put in. So I'm hoping that by August 1st, we can at least get a fridge or something in there. Just put some real, you know, basic, half dozen selection of beer, several of those white cloth things or whatever they're called. Nothing, nothing big, you know, we're not gonna do booze, we're not gonna have wine. Just a little selection of beer that mom and dad or grandpa and grandma want to take the kids with them. And they want to have one or two, they can have it and not, you know, actually have a place to go and stay in town instead of driving from town most part. And then I, we're only gonna do it in the evenings too. I don't think we're available during the day. At least, at least initially, so. I was hoping to tie that together with when I started doing pizza, but that ain't gonna happen either, so still working on that. But I've got fried chicken this week though. So that's, that's what I'm looking at. I, you know, we gave you the little diagram and that's how it looks currently. I mean, there will be some changes once we start moving coolers and freezers around. I'm looking at getting a walk-in cooler and freezer, so if we have that, that would make things way easier. But it's gonna take way more time than I expected. Just, everything is so backed up right now. I, I think I told you the story, to get the walk-in cooler and freezer, it's at least two months because the insulation company was in Texas when they froze this winter. So the insulation company froze, so I can't get insulation for my cooler and freezer. So that's how that works. But, so, yeah, I'm hoping August 1st, like, that might be optimistic, so. So, yeah, that's, that's the plan. If you have any questions or anything, Dale, you look.
So, so this license would, would be for 2021 and then it would jump onto the renewal schedule?
Yes. Okay. Is there any other, can, yeah, is there any other discussion on this?
Well, you have to do it during normal.
Okay. No other discussion? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing and we're gonna reconvene our regular meeting.
I'll have to reconvene. I'd like to make a motion to accept the liquor license request for on-sale beer at Bee's Cafe for the 2021 calendar year.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call.
No.
Aye.
Stern? Aye. Wolf?
Aye. Motion carried. Thanks, Chris. Okay, now we're gonna go back down to 11A, water service insulation.
Reached out to the local contractors, two of them submitted proposals to repair the curbs and that one driveway on Bluegrass Lane. First bid was from Meisner Contracting. Total is $2,300 for both, including the small load fees. Also got an estimate from Winkler Construction for all of the work, including the driveway, $3,700. I don't think there's a lot, a big rush on the curb, but I know that the property owner with the driveway would like to see that repaired reasonably soon.
So the curb's not included in Meisner's?
Yes, it is.
So apples to apples, the, it's all the same work for the, the $2 expressed there?
Yep. Yeah, the curb work for Meisner was 1125 and then 1175 for the driveway.
So I move to, I'm gonna warn the bid to, to Meister.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Time frame on that, do you know?
He didn't, he didn't have a lot of jobs. It was a matter of the, the curve, it would probably be later, more toward August or early September. Depending on what we find out as far as the asphalt, then that would make a difference if we can get them in to do asphalt. We obviously want the curb done first, so we have to work with it. He figured it'd be a couple of weeks yet till they could do the driveway. For both of them, actually, so it would be a couple of weeks for the driveway.
Just like when we have something a little bit more concrete?
Winkler said he's at least, Winkler was at least two months out for the curb and gutter. He told me in private, so.
Roll call?
Stern? Aye.
No.
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion carried. Then we have board appointments for library, forestry and zoning.
There are, or two people did express interest in serving on the library board. Well, Allison Peterson can be reappointed. This would be her second term, second and final term. And then Mickey Fisher would serve the term of Rachel Freilich. Pete Grossman Senior did resign his position recently, so we're still looking for someone to fill that position in. Also with regard to the forestry board, I haven't been able to contact Mr. Jaggar to see if he is interested in serving another term. I've had nobody express any interest in it. And I'm also waiting to hear from Mr. Hoffman regarding the zoning board. And I have had no one express an interest in that board either after we published it. So if you wanted to do the two for the library board at this time, and then we'll just keep, I'll keep hunting for some of the other boards.
Make a motion to accept the two assignments for the library board.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So we gotta keep looking for planning and zoning and forestry.
And one, and one more for the library board.
And one more for the library board. Hope you know of anybody who wants to serve on the, on the board. Let's have them get a hold of Monte. Roll call?
No.
Aye.
Stern? Aye. Wolf?
Aye. Motion carried. The 2021 auditor's bond.
At that time of the year, again, annually have to approve a resolution setting the auditor's bond for the lesser of 25% of the average amount of money subject to the auditor's control, which was $970,308 or $250,000, whichever is less. As we've done in the past, I've set the resolution for the $250,000 pursuant to century code.
I move to approve the bond.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call.
Stern? Aye.
No. Aye.
Wolf?
Aye. Motion carried. And then we have the July 5 meeting, which falls on the Monday. Our city offices are closed that day. Can everybody make it or you want to move it?
You want to move it to?
I will not be able to make it? Yeah, on the 5th?
Have I any of the other two?
I did visit with Jerry. He, he said he was available the 6th and the 7th. I haven't honestly heard from Jason.
And either one of those days would work for me also.
I'm, I'm flexible.
This 6 would be Tuesday?
No.
I propose we go with Tuesday the 6th because Wednesday is midnight.
Okay, so then we'll just, we just can, we can just move it till the 6th, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna have a meeting on the 6th then. Okay, we have approval of the bills and financials.
The motion to approve the bills as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If none, roll call.
No.
Aye.
Stern? Aye. Wolf?
Aye. Motion carried. There's no other business? I'm adjourned.